But in this case, it wasn't breaking bread, it was breaking burritos.
Maya Mexican Restaurant in Wilmington was the site of Councilman Joe Buscaino's second monthly lunch mob. According to the councilman's online invitation to his constituents, the lunch mob is meant to quote, "bring us together and to break bread and get to know our neighbors better", unquote.
Chicken salad's good here at Maya. We also have the chile rialo. Pastor Donizel here. Dan Hoffman from the Chamber. And I'm diving into a carne asada burrito.
While the event did turn into somewhat of an impromptu restaurant review, the councilman says the goal of the monthly lunch mob is to support local businesses and to meet and dialogue with the residents he represents from all areas of his district.
We need to make every effort to support our local small businesses, but at the same token, connecting neighborhoods across the entire Council District 15, from Watts to San Pedro, from Wilmington to Harbor City and Harbor Gateway.
And a resident sees the opportunity to have a face-to-face with the councilman about what her neighborhood desperately needs.
We need our alleys cleaned, you know, more than, I don't think they clean the alleys, to be brutally honest with you. So there's a lot that we need in East Wilmington. Homes where some handicapped individuals live, they can't even get into their side, into the yard because the tree roots have just uprooted the cement.
I'm here to just sit down with Councilman Buscaino to try to form a partnership and give back to the community that we're situated in.
If people didn't get a chance to bend the councilman's ear, there's always next month and another lunch mob. For co-owner of Maya Restaurant, Jesus Gamboa, he's grateful for the publicity and for the councilman's support.
Thank you everyone for joining up. It's very nice to have you guys here and we do our best to serve you guys and the community.
To find out about the next lunch mob, you can go to the councilman's website at la15th.com. The LAPD recognizes a task force of individuals in the department who helped solve dozens upon dozens of cold cases. Rasha Goel has more.
Seventy-five people recently received the LAPD Recognition Award presented by the Los Angeles Police Department. It's an award Los Angeles Police Chief Charlie Beck says they should be proud to show off.
When you get those medals, and when your family asks you, and you start to go, oh shucks, it was nothing ma'am, be proud. It was something. It was more than something. It was significant.
The awards were presented to sworn and civilian personnel for their heroism and humanitarianism. Two officers received the life-saving medal while 73 awardees received a medal known as the Police Commission's Unit Citation.
I feel great about it. I mean, one of the best experiences of my life to be paired with LAPD homicide detectives. It was just fantastic.
Many honorees were members of an LAPD and FBI joint task force called Operation Save Our Streets, which was responsible for investigating cold case homicides, some dating back years.
During the 2010 task force, it was a 90-day task force and we were able to solve 27 murders that had gone unsolved up to that point. In 2011, we again operated the task force for a 90-day period of time and because of the effectiveness and the efficiency of the task force from the previous year, we were able to solve 50 unsolved homicide cases.
Our homicide detectives are probably one of the hardest detectives working in the city of Los Angeles. And because of this task force, this collaboration between the FBI and the Los Angeles Police Department, we were able to put a lot of bad guys in jail. So I'm very, very excited and very proud of this medal.
It's an award that reminds these officers and agents the impact their jobs have on their community.
I'm most proud of the fact that this medal represents the justice and the closure that we've been able to bring to the victim families of the 2010 homicide cases that we were able to solve.
This is the first time FBI officers have been recognized for their work in partnership with the LAPD. Reporting from downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Due to the success of this task force, Operation Save Our Streets is still ongoing. President Bill Clinton comes to Los Angeles to talk climate change and strengthening cities. A look at how female city employees fare in pay and in position compared to their male counterparts. And bright lights, big city. Why more lighting will soon come to Broadway downtown. These stories and more in City Beat.
Former President Bill Clinton and Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti co-hosted a meeting at Los Angeles City Hall on April 3rd to discuss ways of strengthening infrastructure in cities across the country. The so-called "The 21st Century Infrastructure and Innovation for a Resilient Economy Forum" discussed ways of investing in infrastructure projects and dealing with climate change. The forum was attended by investors, labor leaders, and public officials, including those from the Environmental Protection Agency and the U.S. Department of Agriculture. We'll have details of the forum on next week's LA This Week. Just as the city marked the end of Women's History Month, City Controller Ron Gauburn's office released an informational graphic on the city controller's website showing that there's still more work to do to achieve true parity between men and women here in the city. According to the picture graph, female city employees earn 83 cents for every dollar earned by men, and only six of 41 department heads are women. That includes Gina Marie Lindsay from Los Angeles World Airports and Marcy Edwards of L.A. Department of Water and Power. The graphic notes that just one of the city's 15 city council members, Nuri Martinez, is a woman, and that women make up just 2% of city firefighters. The dimmed lights of Broadway will shine bright once again. Councilmember Jose Weezer has announced that 13 Broadway buildings will divide up a $750,000 grant meant to bring back Broadway's facade lighting. The facade lights are meant to beautify as well as contribute to public safety and encourage nighttime activity along the increasingly revitalized corridor. Among the 13 buildings selected are the Bradbury Building at 304 South Broadway, the Million Dollar Theater at 307 South Broadway, and Clifton's Cafeteria at 648 South Broadway. Under the shadow of City Hall was the Grand Park Downtown Book Fest, which took place on the last Saturday in March. The book fest featured the works of Los Angeles-based authors and publishers. Folks got comfortable on cushions laid out on the grass as they listened to poets and authors read aloud from their works onstage.
She's playing softa gento without a piano, fingers moving like a spider on fire.
Visitors were also able to shop the local pop-up bookshops and meet librarians from the Los Angeles Public Library system. Kids even got to try their hand at something new to many of them in this age of computers and keyboards: a typewriter.
And last week, we debuted a new segment we're calling "This Week in Tweets," where we share one social media post from a city leader or city department. They can be a tweet, an Instagram, or a Facebook post. This week, we feature the mayor. While he has an official Instagram account for the mayor's office, this Instagram selfie taken by Mayor Eric Garcetti is from his own personal account. In this photo, the mayor writes, "Atop my trusty steed Whitewater with members of the Chatsworth and Equestrian communities." The photo captures councilmembers Mitchell Englander and Tom Labange in the background. The mayor was in Chatsworth for a trail ride with councilmembers who represent the San Fernando Valley as well as community members. And LA This Week was there and will bring you the complete story next week. And in this week's list of things to do, a big book festival, a family festival, and a puppet festival.
The Getty Center Family Festival offers a day of celebration and discovery inspired by exhibitions at the Getty Villa. And the family festival taking place on Saturday, April 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. celebrates a royal passion. Visitors can enjoy the majestic bagpipe sounds of Queen Victoria's beloved Scotland, sing along to boisterous English music hall tunes, revel in the topsy-turvy world of Gilbert and Sullivan operas, and have pictures taken. Girls and boys can even make their own royal crown at a hands-on workshop and remember the day with the photo album of this royal visit to the Getty Center. The Getty Center is located at 1200 Getty Center Drive. Go to getty.edu. The Los Angeles Times Festival of Books is coming to town on Saturday and Sunday, April 12th and 13th, at the USC University Park Campus. The festival includes over 400 authors blended with hundreds of exhibitors representing booksellers, publishers, and literacy and cultural organizations. There will also be author readings, book signings, children's activities, and much more. Saturday's festival goes from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Sundays from 10:00 to 5:00. More info can be found at events.latimes.com/festivalofbooks. And another event you can take the whole family to is the Puppet Festival at the Skirball Cultural Center. It happens on Sunday, April 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. This third annual Puppet Festival brings together some of Southern California's most talented puppeteers and artists. This day-long festival features interactive performances, art-making, and a diverse array of innovative puppets. The Skirball is located at 2701 North Sepulveda Boulevard. For ticket information and additional details, go to skirball.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
A new power couple is calling Los Angeles home after moving here from Seattle. And from the ooze and ahs of Angelinos and the shutterfly of paparazzi, it looks like the power couple is going to fit right in here in Tinseltown.
Meet Hubert and Calissa, the new king and queen of the Los Angeles Zoo. The African lions, who have been companions for 10 years, recently made their debut in their new home in front of waiting news cameras and adoring fans.
It's pretty awesome. We've been waiting for them to get here.
Are they strong? Are they mean?
But the hope here at the LA Zoo is that zoo-goers will find Hubert and Calissa fascinating and not to be missed. The duo arrived from Seattle's Woodland Park Zoo on March 25th and has been taking some time to get acclimated to their new surroundings.
They're both 15 years old, which is kind of middle age for lions, but they're in great health and great shape, so we look forward to them being here for several years to come.
The LA Zoo made several renovations to its existing lion habitat before bringing on the zoo's new power couple from Seattle.
The habitat here is a grassy area, kind of like the savannas that they might be encountered in in Africa. And they have bedrooms down below, so at night they go down there and that's where they get fed and the keepers make sure that they're doing well. Hubert seems to be enjoying it more at this point. Calissa is a little bit more timid, which is not atypical for female lions. They're the ones that are kind of the watchdogs and certainly the hunters of the pride, so it's pretty typical that she would be more cautious than the male.
And Hubert isn't just making himself at home, he's stealing the spotlight from Zoo Director John Lewis.
Is a lion really the king of the jungle? Can you tell me about that?
He certainly are one of the kings, and I think he's giving his opinion on that right now. Might be more exciting to me.
Making their presence known and asserting their throne as king and queen of the jungle, at least here at the Los Angeles Zoo.
Prior to Hubert and Calissa, the zoo's former lion residents were Cookie and Lionel, but Zoo Director John Lewis said they died due to age-related illnesses. The lioness Cookie died in 2012 while Lionel died in 2011. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at elicitiview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week. Every day, our brave troops and their families stand up for us.
For years, we've asked so much of so few.
Now we have a chance to serve these heroes.
To give time, offer comfort, or lend a hand.
To ease the burden on a military family.
Let's honor their service by volunteering ours.
G'day. Troy McCavlin from North Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Good morning, good morning. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and the public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, I believe we do have a quorum. Could you call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonner, Buscano, Sadio, Angler, Fuentes, Weezer, Carrasco, Corian, Labange, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Wesson, ten members present and in quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Ofero moves. Labange seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weezer moves. Mr. Price seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to items 1 through 18. They're items noted for public hearing.
Cards?
Yes, sir. We have cards on item number one.
So let's specials members on the other items? So we're just holding one?
Yes, sir.
All right. No speakers in the queue, so let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
And, Mr. President, unless reconsidered later, those ordinances will go over for a second read.
Okay, well, I'm hopeful that we will get enough members and then we'll vote on that again today. So let's move on to the next.
Very good, sir. Items 19 through 33 are items for which public hearings have been held. For item 21, the city clerk reports that the tabulated value of the opposing ballots cast does not exceed the tabulated value of the supporting ballots cast. Thus, a majority protest is not found to exist and the proposed establishment may be authorized. Further, items 19, 20, 25, and 33 have been circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, we'll hold items 19 and 20. Mr. Ofero?
President, item 24 special, please.
Okay, 24 called special by Mr. Ofero. Mr. Labange?
I like 28 because it's significant. So it's special.
Thank you. I get that and we appreciate it. Okay, let's, Mr. Clerk, prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now, can we vote on reconsider the ordinances or maybe?
Absolutely, sir. Those would be items 2 through 14, 2 through 14.
Okay, so let's now have a vote on reconsideration on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Now let's actually vote on the items since we do have 12 members. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And Mr. Sadio was here, Madam Clerk, for that last vote. So it's 13 ayes. So that brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, items 34 through 41 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on 34, 35, 36, and 37.
Okay, let's hold those items and let's prepare to vote on the other items. Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right. Mr. Clerk, that brings us what? To forty-two?
Yes, sir. That's a matter scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold it on the desk?
Yes, I would. So let's hold that.
And, Mr. President, before moving on, pardon me. There's been a request from a member to send item twenty-nine forthwith.
Oh, I had no problem in that, so consider it done. Mr. Carras, so that again, before I jump the gun here, that brings us to presentations?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Carras, are you ready? Mr. Ofero, are you part of this presentation as well? A very special presentation, I might add, to a very familiar face and voice. Mr. Carras and Mr. Laban is joining you. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm thrilled that today our city council has the special privilege of saluting Turner Classic Movies, or TCM, on the magnificent occasion of its twentieth anniversary. Standing here with us are Robert Osborne and Ben Mankiewicz, who do extraordinary work hosting TCM's programming, as well as Charlie Tabish, TCM's Senior VP of Programming, and Genevieve McGillicuddy, TCM Managing Director of the TCM Film Festival. When I heard that this year marked TCM's twentieth anniversary, I thought we absolutely had to invite them here to be honored. And that's because through its televised programming and other various endeavors, TCM has introduced, preserved and championed countless stellar examples of one of modern humanities' truly transcendent art form, cinema. TCM reminds the world each and every day of the marvels of motion pictures. And in doing so, TCM has enthralled, enchanted and enlightened millions of people. And so, without further ado, I'd ask you to join me in watching this short video about
Okay. Mr. Carras, you may have to sing until the video... There we are.
You once said you loved me.
This time it's really love, tra-la-la-la.
Rosebud. You've got to get off my back.
Set him up, bartender.
But you're not really as mad as you pretend to be, are you?
What's that man doing in my drawers?
Will you sing me a song?
They applauded and cheered and they owed and odd.
Were we invited a distinguished guest?
I want all of you to get up out of your chairs.
When I'm mad, I am mad. Going straight out the door.
Yes, but I have to meet somebody here. Oh, there he is.
Citizens, though, that I'll do everything in my power to protect the underprivileged.
And Brutus is an honorable man.
Oh, I can't think of a better way to fight a war.
Nobody's asking you to be a hero.
Played once, eh? For old times' sake.
He's looking at you, kid.
Looks like it's back to the perfume counter for me.
There's no place like home.
Are you with me?
Why?
Rejoicing in my heart.
Come, the eighth wonder of the world.
Stuff that dreams are made of.
And it was great to see the late, great Mickey Rooney in a clip along with all those other iconic scenes and actors and actresses. The motion picture industry, as we all know, is as crucial to Los Angeles and California as we are to it. And so, we're constantly exploring ways in which to keep that industry here and flourishing. But while the economic benefits of the industry are vital to us, so too is the ongoing artistic legacy it has given us. That's why TCM, as a key treasure and treasured advocate for film, is of spectacular importance to this city and its people, businesses and organizations. With incredible generosity of spirit and devotion to creative excellence, TCM provides a crucial window into the soul of the work, people and achievements that have made Los Angeles what we are today. And while it is TCM's twentieth anniversary year, there's even a more immediate local reason to celebrate TCM. And so, I'd like to ask my colleague Mitch Ofero to speak about that. But first, I want to note that we each have our own personal bucket list. And while mine, the top on my list was achieved when I had a chance to sing with Dave Davies of The Kinks, I understand that Councilmember Ofero would be, and what would put him in seventh heaven, would be guest programming for one night on TCM. I think he'd be great for that. Mitch?
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Thank you so much, Mr. President. Colleagues, good morning. I am greatly honored to be part of this presentation as we recognize Turner Classic Movies on their twentieth anniversary and declare today, April ninth, as TCM Day in the city of Los Angeles. From the time silent movies first flickered on the big screen and through Hollywood's golden age to the present day, Hollywood has captured the imagination of the entire world. The gold standard of filmmaking was developed in Hollywood and TCM enables all of us to experience its rich history. Thank you, TCM, for bringing this classic film festival to Hollywood for the fifth year in a row, bringing moviegoers from around the world home where movies were made. It also helps our local economy and we appreciate that. And to Robert Osborne and Ben Mankiewicz, you are exemplary hosts. Robert, you are legendary in your own right. Your name is synonymous with the sublime Turner Classic Movie Channel. It is a special privilege to have you in council chambers today. I will never forget your interview with then-one-hundred-year-old Louise Reiner before the screening of her 1937 movie, The Good Earth, for which she won her second Oscar in a row. I was there that day. When she divulged she forgot her hearing aids, you conducted the interview with pen and paper to the delight of the audience. A packed house then saw this masterpiece on the big screen, the way it was meant to be. Your interviews with Hollywood legends over the years have helped revive what is so special about this signature industry, bringing Hollywood magic into living rooms across the world every day of every year, enabling new generations to experience the wonders of film from a bygone era. We lost a Hollywood legend this week with the passing of Mickey Rooney. It is TCM that has brought a new generation of movie fans to Mickey Rooney and his remarkable Andy Hardy films. These films and other classic movies in their storytelling remind us all of important life lessons through the eyes of the characters portrayed. This has helped shape our values as a society to become better people. We all benefit from this every time we tune in to TCM. It is in deep appreciation for all you do and bringing this wonderful festival to Hollywood that I present this resolution to Turner Classic Movies. Maybe we'll do it now. We'll do some posing now.
Let's do a sweep right here first. Mr. Carras and Mr. Ofero, I just want to thank you because this is the greatest channel on the system if you want to really learn about history. Because it shows the great films that have been made for entertainment reasons, but also for historic reasons. And I'm just very proud. And I was just having a pre-presentation discussion with these fine people about Humphrey Bogart and George Raff and Sheridan. And they drive by night and they're rolling truck drivers down Highway One and all the excitement and all the film. But you don't know how much has been filmed in our streets of Los Angeles. You know who shot here? Say, is that right here? You know, is that right here? Jack Nicholson, J.J. Giddies in Chinatown. All the sheep came through here. Mr. President, I know you sometimes have comments, but all that sheep came in here. This is a wonderful place that we are, Los Angeles. This is a wonderful channel that we all can learn from. And the Millikin Middle School kids could learn from the Turner Classic Movies right there. Give them a hand.
Let's give the kids a round of applause, our young visitors.
And I just wanted to say, the greatest thing is, uh, two things. One, working in this building for nearly forty years, I've met many people. I met Henry Fonda right outside here when he was getting set up for a shot. I met Mickey Rooney just a month ago, Paul, out there in our district. And every time I meet a young person who wants to be an actor or an actress, I say, "Show up fifteen minutes early to any call and watch TCM." Because you'll learn from film. So I just don't want to say anymore. Mr. President, I know you've cut me off before. You've got to say "cut" because I could keep talking all the time. So say "cut," Mr. President.
Cut.
All right.
Now, I have to say, people have said that this is the best channel. If my mother-in-law were here, Judith Cooper, she's in New York, she would say it's the only channel. It's literally the only television channel she watches and she would be thrilled to see what we're doing today. Now, it's my great pleasure to introduce a hero of film lovers anywhere and everywhere, Robert Osborne.
All right. Let's give him a round of applause. Welcome, welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. I want to get everybody's phone number here so if I get depressed at three in the morning, I can call you up and you can pat me on the back.
I'll take the call.
No, we're so appreciative of this honor and being honored by Los Angeles. And Los Angeles has been so good to the movies. It's where the movies started here in America. It's where movie fans love to come. We've been doing this film festival for five years. And I think at the beginning, there was some thought that we might do it one year here and then move it around to different parts of the country. And then, everybody came to the conclusion and realized that people, the fans, love to come to Los Angeles, to the area where these movies were made, where they started out. And so, that's one of the great pulls of the film festival and we're very proud about that. But we thank you for this honor so much. And I do have to pay some regards to some of the people that were responsible for the success, are responsible for the channel, Steve Coonan, Jeff Greger, Charlie Tabish back here, who does all of our programming. So if there's too... Yes. So if there's too much Elvis Presley, but not enough Barbra Stanwyck, he's the one you have to talk to. Okay. And also Dennis Admanson, Tricia Meldon, Paula Shagnon, Darcy Hettrich, Tom Brown, Sean Cameron, and they're a very hard-working team. So we have to thank them all for what they contribute. I mean, I get too much attention from it already, but they're the ones that do so much of the work and make it all happen. Also, I have to say, in thanking these people responsible for the channel, a big thanks to Brad Siegel, who really started it all twenty years ago and set the pattern into motion. But also Ted Turner, who bought this huge library of films. Yeah. And everybody thought he was crazy for doing it. They said, "Who'd want to watch old films?" You know? And it, we've proven that people do love to see old films and they're very important to us and our legacy. And it's just wonderful to come here and find out it's not only important to us that are doing it, but important to you watching it. So thank you so much.
Now, thank you. Thank you very much. And Mr. Ofero, you're going to have to wait in line to become the guest host. You can come right after me.
And I don't think Ben Mankiewicz was necessarily expecting to speak, but he's also a very revered TCM host, so I'd ask him if he wants to say a few words.
Please. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Thank you for having us. It's been an incredible ten years for me. Robert has been here all twenty years. It's been a remarkable ten years for me at TCM. Robert and I hear stories all the time. We'll hear them this week at the festival. People who are ill or their parents were ill and how TCM got them through really difficult times. And we know the channel means a great deal to our fans and we're really grateful for that. Just for me personally, my family for years has had three businesses, journalism, movies and politics. And I live out here in Los Angeles now, so to be here and to have the network honored here by the Los Angeles City Council, a great thrill for me personally and for the network. Thank you guys so much for doing this, horse. Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
I just got to say, his father, Frank Mankiewicz, was so special to us in the time of great grief when Robert Kennedy was, you know, called from this earth. And I just want to, his dad's ninety years old.
That's right.
And still working hard in DC, so Frank Mankiewicz, give him our love, okay?
I talked to him on the way here and I don't know what that means, but he was like, "Say hello to everybody." So hello.
No, you can go on and conclude.
Well, now, Mitch, Tom, Robert and Ben, Charlie and Genevieve, I'd like to ask you all to join me as we make this special proclamation presentation. It's been signed by the whole council, the mayor, city attorney and comptroller, in recognition that April fourteenth will be the momentous twentieth anniversary to the day of the launch of TCM. And the proclamation concludes by saying, "Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Los Angeles salutes and celebrates TCM for its majestic contributions and heroic dedication to the living legacy of film. The city expresses its profound gratitude and offers its heartfelt congratulations on TCM's twentieth anniversary and furthermore commemorates this happy occasion by proclaiming April fourteenth, 2014, to be TCM Day in the city of Los Angeles."
Mr. Laban's? They told me...
I got an answer on twenty-eight. All rates and fees still go through the department, commission, council and mayor, so I'm okay with twenty-eight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then, members, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. Corian, would you be ready?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a real pleasure for me to recognize today one of my better-known constituents. Josh Rubenstein is known to literally millions of viewers around Southern California who know him as the chief meteorologist of CBS Two and KCAL Nine. He's a leader in his profession as an Emmy Award winner. He has a certified broadcast meteorologist seal, which puts him in the upper echelon of television meteorologists. He's a Golden Mike winner. And we all know and depend upon Josh for his work. But I wanted to bring him here today, not so much for that, but because of the extraordinary mark that he's left on the San Fernando Valley and particularly the North Hollywood and Van Nuys communities. Josh is one of those people who, despite his celebrity delight, despite the demanding profession he has, always finds a way to make a significant contribution to the people that are lucky enough to call him neighbor and community member. He has for years been one of the most vocal and effective advocates for the police department in the North Hollywood and Van Nuys area through our Police Activities League, through the CPABs. He's taken leadership roles in both of those areas. When East Valley High School needed a little extra attention and a little... When East Valley High School needed a little extra attention and a little support, Josh was there to help them as well. When it came to disaster preparedness, Josh worked closely with the American Red Cross to make sure that our neighbors and our community members were better prepared for the inevitable disasters that we always experience in, in Southern California. He's been an innovator, he's been a leader, uh, he's been a great friend and neighbor to so many of us, and I'm so pleased to be able to invite him here to counsel so that we can appropriately recognize his many years of great work for our community. And, uh, so before I ask Josh to come up, I would, I'm honored to have Captain Carmona here with us from the North Hollywood Division of the Los Angeles Police Department, and Captain Carmona's gonna speak a little bit about some of the many ways that Josh has made a positive difference for the Los Angeles Police Department and the people it serves. Captain?
Thank you, Councilman. I'd just like to say that Josh is my partner, my seat, uh, police, uh, Community Police Advisory Board co-chair, and I am in awe of just how much he does for North Hollywood, the community, and the San Fernando Valley. His tireless work ethic, and, and he is a true role model and a leader for us. I'm honored to stand here today and call him my partner. And I want to thank you all for taking the time to honor him today. It is so well-deserved. He's an outstanding Angelino, and again, a truly remarkable partner.
Thank you very much, Captain. You know, we're all proud of the way crime rates continue to decline in Los Angeles, and it's appropriate that we give the men and women of the Los Angeles Police Department so much credit for that. But it couldn't happen without people like Josh in our communities who are working to support their work and to bring community policing truly into the community. And, uh, one of the ways that Josh has done that is through his work with young people, through the Police Activities League, and also through his support of East Valley High School. And so I'm pleased to have the principal of East Valley High School with us here today, Dr. Allen, who'd like to say a few words as well. Dr. Allen.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to publicly thank Josh for his contribution to East Valley High School. As the principal there, our family was really honored to have him help us launch the opening of our brand-new broadcast studio there at East Valley High School. To the councilman and to Josh and his family, congratulations on a job well-done and well-deserved, and we look forward to partnering with you in the future.
Thanks so much.
So, Mr. President, if I may, on behalf of the people of the City of Los Angeles, and especially the people of the San Fernando Valley, whose lives are made better and safer by the work that Josh Rubenstein has done in our community, I'm very proud to present to him this certificate of recognition signed by every member of the City Council and the Mayor of Los Angeles. Josh, congratulations and thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Councilman, uh, and thank you, everybody, for recognizing me. I, I'm not sure I totally deserve it, but I appreciate it. And, uh, Councilman Kukorian, I have the utmost respect and adoration for you, and I'm so happy you're representing me here at City Hall. Um, I do have to say a special thank you to my wife and my daughter, who, who make it possible for me to volunteer and to miss dinner and events so that I can go out to be with the public. Um, I'll tell you that most of my volunteer work has been with the LAPD and doing, working on community policing. It's something that I absolutely love. And having worked so closely with the fine men and women that are in blue, I can tell you that we have the finest police force in the entire country. Ten thousand men and women who are committed to weeding out the bad and celebrating the good, and really, truly making this the safest big city in America. And I couldn't be happier to work with them. What is amazing is, um, I'm not alone. There are thousands of volunteers who spend their time away from their families and go to meetings and participate in symposiums, and, and many of them are right behind me here. And we all are in this together, and we want to roll up our sleeves and make this city better. And I couldn't be happier to be a part of that contingent as well. And I can tell you that they all live by the same principle that I live by, and it's the one that I hope that my daughter Rachel will, uh, will live by as she grows up, and that is, leave the place a little better than the way you found it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Kukorian. So, Mr. Clerk, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to item number one, called Special for Cards.
Okay, on item one, if I could have Mr. Walsh, uh, Mr. Knight, it says, and a Mr. Akala, on item one.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or at JWalshConfidential, or tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This concerns approval to record liens, money, unpaid taxes. Mr. William F. Lien, and it's a seven thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars that the gentleman owes. But, uh, I'd just like to finish my minute. Uh, we have some high school students. You see, uh, because I am a Jew, they will not put my face on camera, or if you're black and Hispanic, only white people get close-ups. I just want the students to know that. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Well, in my opinion, only the Jews are allowed to hit jackpots at the casinos. But here, in the city of LA, if you own a little residence, you are in deep water, because City Hall will find every way to take that place away from you. And then you tell us, "We want to eliminate poverty, we want to eliminate homelessness, and we want to..."
Thank you very much. You're off the topic. Next speaker.
No, 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 it's right there. I'm talking about the lien you put on that house. That's what I'm talking about. I'm, I'm talking about all the liens you put on the houses. I'm talking about you.
Then keep talking.
I am. That's what I'm talking about. You should not be doing that. We should be doing business in a different way, not in a way to keep everybody homeless. It is the topic. The topic is, no city should have the right to take money away from the citizens just because they're sitting ducks, just because they bought our house.
Yeah, you, uh, city attorney instructed me, Mr. Akala, this is a lien against property. Thank you for your comment.
I know it's a lien against...
Next speaker. It's a business lien. Thank you. Thank you very much. Sergeant, would you please have the speaker sit him down? He's gonna hurt himself. I don't want him jumping over the rope. Next time, I'm gonna ask you to get a safety lesson. Mr. Herman.
William F. Young. William F. Young. William F. Young has a seven thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents on a lien against his property. Likely, the chance, and the possibility, and the problem is this: The city prohibits us from living in our homes without an ordinance that they will put against your property if there's a complaint. However, women and children learn this. Just the other day in the news, building and safety violate the rights of those people who were illegally removed from their property by the fire department without that lien process of giving nineteen thousand dollars of relocation fees. However, Batman, Batman the Dark Knight, was called in to confirm the issue on William F. Ying, because...
Please stay on topic to this address.
...for unpaid taxes, and these amounts is staggering. It prohibits people like you and I that live in Los Angeles. They call us Angelinos. They call you the youth generation, the X. But we continue to have a problem in this city, and Batman wants to gain your trust, children, that soon City Hall will change and become a better place for all of us, because for Batman is back to save all of you from the injustice of these illegal liens of extortion and bribery. It was bribery.
Mr. City Attorney. Thank you. Mr. Corretts.
Two, two legal questions. One, why do we allow that to go on? It has nothing to do with the liens that are before us. And number two, are you legally allowed to wear the American flag in that kind of disrespectful way?
Mr. City Attorney.
The Speaker had been admonished to stay on topic. The flag, uh, under the flag code, it is discouraged to wear it in that manner, but it is not illegal.
Thank you. Mr. President, in regards to this matter, there is a request to receive and file it inasmuch as William F. Ying, CPAS, has entered into a payment plan with the Office of Finance.
Thank you. We'll take the recommendation. Do we vote on it?
Yes, sir.
All right, on the recommendation, vote, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Thank you very much. And I also want to invite, uh, another recognition for Milliken Middle School in Sherman Oaks. This is the eighth-grade class, and we want to welcome all here for their civics academy and their teacher, uh, Ms. Erin Tagliu. Give them a big hand, Milliken. All right, thirty, thirty, uh, four, thirty-four is the next one.
Very good, sir. That's item thirty-four, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Akala.
I wish to speak only one minute, and you're already taking, uh, six seconds out of my time even before arriving. So, uh, see, a little bit before, uh, adopt the accompanying resolution removing the following properties from the rent escrow. Uh, Mr. Corretts, you don't even know the laws, and you are here. Program re, uh, the owner have corrected, uh, the rape, I'd say rape, the rape violations, and provided proof of compliance that, um, uh, he had been raped by the, um, City Council. Uh, LSU Code Enforcement Unit Habitabilities citations pursuant to ordinance 1738. Are you paying attention, Mr. Corretts, or are you talking to somebody else?
Mr. Akala, please direct your comments to the chair.
The findings contained in LSU's report attached, well, uh, I wish, from now on, if I'm to be admonished by somebody that actually knows the laws and is a legislator, come on. Um, anyway, the whole thing is crooked, and you know it, and I know it, and we need to change the way we do real estate. It's just a mess. Landlords and tenants fighting it out, killing each other.
Well, that completes your comments. Thank you. Mr. Herman.
There's one thing in one minute I can say about the rent escrow. It's doing its business for the people. It's doing its business for the people, because it's the public trust that we Americans deserve habitable living in Los Angeles. So within this thirty-five seconds, I want to reflect that again. You're doing a good job when you save the lives of people whose communities are broken down by rent escrow, uh, slum lords. So don't forget, keep this action going one minute.
Thank you. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
We have some commissioners here for nineteen and twenty. Would you like to call them together? We thank the deputy mayor for the assistance.
Mr. President, we have items nineteen and twenty, called Special, for Councilmember That would be Mr. David Malcolm Carson and Ms. Daphne Brogdon.
Yes, Mr. Wesson.
Okay, I was looking around for Mr. Weezer, but I thought that I'd want to speak on this item and, and just let this body know that I wholeheartedly support both of these recommendations. In particular, I support Daphne. Even though, and I support her two, two-hundred percent, even though, Mr. President, I've only known her for forty-eight hours. I had the opportunity to meet her this past Monday at about nine forty-five at night, when I visited the Willshire Police Station, which is adjacent to West Traffic, where we had a suspect enter the station and fire on two officers. Daphne and the Olympic Park Neighborhood Council were in a room that this assailant had to pass in order to get to the small lobby where he could confront the police officers. The room that they were in is also a room that was used for our explorers. The explorers, fortunately, were not meeting on Monday night. For whatever reason, this man walked right past them where there were approximately thirty of our residents helping to conduct the city's business. This could have been a terrible nightmare. As they were conducting the city's business, they heard shot after shot after shot, approximately a dozen shots. In the room, which only has one way in and one way out, a gunshot came through the room and then exited the room. This neighborhood council, which I'm proud to say is in the district that I represent, they were calm, cool, and collected. Plus, my district director, Sylvia Lacy, was there and, and was instrumental in making sure that individuals were calm and cool. The only reason why I was there is because I found out that you were there. I trust the police department to do their work, but when I knew I had a staff person there, and when I knew that I had constituents there, I felt compelled to go. What they're not telling you in the newspapers is, after all of this happened, and I don't know, I would probably still be running up and down Venice Boulevard screaming if it were me. They voted three times on issues important to the city and important to the neighborhood council. If Daphne could sit through that, and when I first came up, when I came upstairs... If Daphne could sit through that, and when I first came upstairs, Mr. Corretts, to meet the neighborhood council, they gave me a round of applause. I said, "I didn't do it. You guys deserve a round of applause." If she could sit through that and exhibit magnificent courage, then I have no doubt that she can perform the duties that the mayor has requested of her. So I find that I have to rise and support three hundred percent my dear friend that I've known for forty-eight hours, who will be his president-elect of the Longwood Homeowners Association, which is one of the oldest homeowners association in the area. So, members, I request a resounding i-vote from all of us for a hero, for a person that maybe wouldn't even be here today if it wasn't for the actions that they took, that they were calm, they were cool, there were people that wanted to make noise after it, but they decided... Anyway, I am so proud of each and every one of you. And the members here can tell you, I rarely speak because they do such a good job, so I don't have to. But I have to stand up to say that this woman that I met at about nine forty-six on Monday evening deserves our support, and so I am requesting an i-vote. And, sir, because you're fortunate enough to sit next to her, I am going to ask that all of this goodness that I'm putting over here on Daphne, that some of it fall over on you. So we will request, I am requesting an i-vote on both of these fine individuals. I am so proud of you, Daphne. You showed such courage. Maybe they say a little bit about themselves, and then if we could vote unanimously, again, I am so proud.
Well, thank you, Councilman Wesson. Is that all right for me to speak? Okay, I won't speak much. Very kind of you. And we applauded because when you came in, we were so appreciative of the support, and it was a validation really of what we'd gone through. So we appreciate, and Sylvia Lacy was a hero.
She's a rock.
And you should be really proud of her.
She's a rock.
As the guns, bullets were going off, and she said, "Be quiet, be quiet." She was really great. So anyway, but I just want to say, in terms of the commission, I'm very excited to be asked to do this by the mayor. I love this city. I'm a native Angelino, and I look forward to trying to help in regional planning to make it a more beautiful and workable city for all of the stakeholders.
Thank you.
Well, it's pretty hard to top that. I didn't go through a harrowing, life-threatening experience, but I also am very honored to have been chosen by the mayor to serve on the South Area Planning Commission. I'm really excited. I'm a native Angelino myself as well, and I love this city, and I want to be a part of making it a better, more beautiful, more workable place. And so I really appreciate all of everybody's support.
Good. And what high school did you both go to?
I went to, it was called Area D, which is a magnet school, it's next to Hamilton.
Hamilton High School?
Well, so I had the misfortune of having my father getting a job at Stanford when I was a kid, and so I ended up going to high school in Palo Alto, California.
Oh, lucky you.
So sorry about that.
We're lucky to have you back.
I made it back.
Good. Mr. Sedia, the First District.
Let's don't hold it that against him, Mr. LaBonne.
Only that we heard both nominees yesterday, and it was our comments that it was quite an expression of commitment to service that after that initial meeting, that she would come to our committee yesterday and to continue to be committed to serving the city. It really is extraordinary. David, you have an incredible record of preparation for this. Your training, Howard, Berkeley, both School of Law. Your work at Legal Aid today positions you in a great spot to continue that service for the city, and so we look forward to it. They are both, Mr. President, as you said, eminently qualified, both with ploys and grace through challenging times. The mayor has done an extraordinary job again in choosing some very stellar Angelinos for service to the city, and so I concur with your recommendation.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sedia. No other speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Fourteen eyes.
Mr. President, that brings us to item twenty-four called special for Councilmember O'Farrell.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are there speaker cards on this item?
No cards on this.
No cards on this item.
I just got handed a card on this item. Hearing was satisfied in committee.
All right, thank you. Colleagues, item twenty-four amends the municipal code to outlaw the use of animal traps or snares that maim, kill, or cause inhumane suffering, and they authorize the Department of Animal Services to promulgate reasonable rules and regulations regarding the use of humane traps. We also, I want to acknowledge the work of John Chavez, the Assistant General Manager of Animal Services, who is here today, and also the work of our wildlife specialist, Gregory Randall. Last year, it was brought to my attention after a horrific tragedy in Silver Lake where a coyote was ensnared in one of these wire traps and was slowly choking to death. And it came to my attention, and I, thanks to the work of my policy adviser, Christine Peters, and I asked Christine if this was legal, if these traps were legal in the city of Los Angeles. Turns out, they are. But after today's vote, hopefully, they will no longer be legal. This subsection will not apply to the over-the-counter pest controls available to the public that are used for dealing with rodents. And so I not only urge your i-vote, but I hope that we can uphold the standard that Mahatma Gandhi once said, and that is, a society can be judged by the way it treats its animals. Colleagues, banning these cruel and sadistic torture devices to deal with our wildlife is the way to go. Not only that, but I have a file on this that also has pictures of household pets that escape their yards that occasionally get trapped in these snares. And it happens in the several dozen every year in the city of Los Angeles. It's just something that we don't see or know about. So I urge an i-vote on this so we can make it the law of the land in the city of Los Angeles.
Mr. Farrell, because of your passion, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
You did hear this in committee. Would you like some speakers to speak, or do you...
Yes, please. We do have a few folks from the animal welfare community who did come today to speak to this item. I would love that. Thank you, sir.
Good. I would have Linda Estalante, followed by Skip Haynes, followed by Randy, I want to say it correctly, Fletch. Please.
On behalf of the Natural Resources Defense Council, I'm here to speak, also on behalf of several thousand members and activists in Los Angeles. We wish to state our support for the recommendations of the Department of Animal Services in its report on the uses of snares and traps of wildlife in Los Angeles. N R D C, as you know, is not an animal welfare organization. Rather, our purpose is to safeguard the earth, its people, its plants, and animals, and natural systems on which all life depends. So today, I come as a wildlife conservation advocate. I want to speak about the conservation value of this bill that this bill will provide to the city. In my own experience as a biology student at UCLA and later wildlife rehabilitation volunteer at the California Wildlife Center in Calabasas, I learned a lot about the conflict between human development and wildlife. While most people think of wildlife as something encountered in remote forest deserts or mountains, our cities also have wildlife of their own, animals that have adapted to living among us and often perform valuable functions. Small mammals, residents, and migratory species of birds and aquatic wildlife, all call parks of Los Angeles home, and larger animals such as foxes, coyotes, and even mountain lions live in the parks and open space within Los Angeles. Many of these animals provide valuable ecological services. Birds of prey and coyote help keep pigeon and rodent populations in check. Owls are one of the few species that regularly prey on skunks. Coyotes also keep foxes, possum, and other small predators populations down. In fact, studies in urban coyotes in Chicago have shown that coyotes protect migratory sombres in urban parks by discouraging feral cats from entering them. Coyotes and mountain lions also help control deer population, and lions have been shown to increase vegetation along streams and even boost butterfly diversity. Unfortunately, these traps don't discriminate. They are inherently non-selective. That's why N R D C opposes the use of snares and traps of wildlife control agents in Los Angeles. Better methods of controlling problem animals exist, which do not undermine the conservation of urban wildlife, wildlife that are very much the part of promoting a truly sustainable and environmentally friendly urban environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next is Skip Haynes, followed by Randy Fletch.
Hello, everybody. My name's Skip Haynes. I'm a director on the board of Citizens for Los Angeles Wildlife. We're the only organization that advocates for wildlife across the board, habitats, corridors, and wildlife itself. I'm also probably the only person in this room that ever used a collarum trap. That's one of the snares they're talking about. I track-trapped and rehabbed a coyote named Rosie about four years ago. You may have read about her in Steve Lopez's column, and we used a collarum trap set to non-lethal, which means there's a stop put on the snare so when the animal's trapped, it doesn't choke them. These traps are one hundred percent effective against canines. They're totally inhumane. You have to tranquilize an animal to get it out of the trap. You have to stand and watch the trap. So it's financially not feasible to use, and our organization and all our members are absolutely for the fact that these traps should be outlawed in Los Angeles. Los Angeles needs to elevate its consciousness about wildlife and habitat, and this is a huge first step. This will resound all over the country, so we support this immensely. And if you've ever seen an animal trapped in one of these traps, you would never, ever allow them to be used. So we support this. Good going. You should pass this. Every one of you should vote to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy, help me pronounce your last name correctly.
My name is Randy Filish.
Thank you, Randy.
Good morning. My name is Randy Filish, and I'm the Southern California representative for Project Coyote. Project Coyote is a coalition of wildlife scientists, educators, promoting active coexistence between people and wildlife through education, science, and advocacy. I am a volunteer. I speak before you on behalf of the seventy-five-hundred national supporters and constituents that we have, of which many live in Los Angeles. We support the proposed ordinance to prohibit the use of snares and other lethal and inhumane traps. Snares are cruel and inhumane, and they're indiscriminate. These traps cause horrific suffering to the trapped animals. Animals are left there to struggle for freedom, for sometimes for days, before dying a slow and painful death. Scientific research shows that trapping is ultimately ineffective and ethically indefensible. Coyotes and other wildlife serve ecological roles by helping reduce the rodent populations and by keeping our ecosystems balanced and in check. The great irony of trapping is that it sounds safe to most people, but provides no guarantee that the targeted animal is the one that is actually trapped and killed. In addition, trapping unnecessarily tortures the animal. Pets and other non-target animals are frequent victims of snares and other body gripping traps. The city of Los Angeles has a real opportunity to create a model plan here, one that emphasizes environmental stewardship and a humane approach to living with our wildlife. Los Angeles residents will appreciate environmental values that promote humane and safe alternatives to living with our wildlife. The city of Los Angeles should focus on consistent and persistent public education.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Herman.
Can we ever coexist without harming a harmless animal in its own habitat? I'm not going to reiterate what this wonderful group of people are here to say to save us bats from traps, save us wild animals from being trapped, but there will be an anonymous vote today. All yeses because our motion will stick. It will stick because we want to coexist with our habitat. We want effective trapping and not killing bees, Mr. Corretts, because bees give an awful sting, but that's an insect. But let's save and promote animal safety and eliminate the cruelty to all animals, including me, Batman.
All right, that completes the speakers' queue. Three out of four is not bad. Okay, so let's open the roll. Mr. Blumenfeld, close the roll. Don't close the roll yet, Alan. Go back to zero. Mr. Blumenfeld, excuse me.
Not a long time, but I just wanted to really thank Mr. O'Farrell. When I saw this motion, I was, the shocking part about this motion wasn't what was in it, but was the fact that it's 2014 and we hadn't done this yet. So that was what really shocked me, is I frankly had assumed that these were outlawed in a progressive area like Los Angeles. Other cities have done it, and so I am glad that you are bringing L.A. up to what my expectation is of L.A., where it should be. So thank you for that, and thank you for bringing it forward, and I urge your support.
All right, thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld. No other speakers on the queue. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Fourteen eyes. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to item thirty-five called special for cards.
All right, item thirty-five called special by Mr. Walsh, Herman, and Akala. And I think I have one other card. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or JWalshConfidential, or tweeting at HollywoodDems. This is, again, reward offer. Every meeting, there's a reward offer. Years and years and years, I've been coming here since the 1980s, and I've never seen anybody collect on a reward. Now, Mr. Corretts has said that he knows of somebody who collected on a reward, so that would make me a liar. But in order to make me a liar, Mr. Corretts has to tell me, when was the reward issued? Who got the reward? And where it happened? He claims, so again and again, I am called a liar, but no background. As far as I know, there are three hundred, over three hundred rewards, and not a single one has been collected on because snitches, you've seen my shirt, pay twenty-five dollars for it, selling out on Hollywood Boulevard. Snitches get stitches. If you try to collect this reward, and I'm taking everyone out of here, the gangs will kill you. Why do you think we don't have any street filming in L.A.? Because they're afraid of the streets because the gangs shake down the film locations. Many of the gangs do. Okay, this is where Clinton Hibbert and Kenneth Patterson, six months additional. I don't understand, yesterday you had a reaffirming. In other words, no one has collected it yet. This is for seventy-five thousand. That's only thirty-seven and a half a piece. Yesterday, or rather, it was fifty thousand. I'm telling you, this is a joke. I'm telling you, this is a cruel joke on people, on Judge Pergerson who got up here. No one is going to try to collect on these awards because they're as gutless as you are. HollywoodHighlands.org. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Herman. And I've been informed, he has one minute? One minute, Mr. Herman.
Damage control, damage control. If we would have the same type of regulations in our police stations, we can... Well, you're taking my picture here. Good picture? Thank you. We can regulate the problems of people losing their lives and asking for rewards. Just imagine the other day at a police station, we would have been asking for a reward for the man who ran out of the police station twenty feet and out the door. But again, keep to the subject. Reaffirming the reward offer and the deaths of people is just inviting. It's inviting. David Pergerson's issue, another inviting issue of someone's life that you don't care about. So stop crime, stop the action of your own actions of these rewards, and if you are going to post them, then post them based on Daniel Gus's action yesterday during council chambers about how...
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Akala. One minute, I'm told.
Yes, I'm offering a reward for...
Yes, I'm offering a reward for anybody that stops Mr. Corretts from eating in City Hall. Anyway, these rewards, as Mr. Walsh said, it's... What are you actually doing? If since 1980, only one reward or none have been collected, why are you still offering rewards? I mean, isn't it a waste of time? People should just say what they saw when they saw it, you know? I saw this guy get hit by a bus. He was on a bicycle, and I'm a witness, simply because I saw it.
Stay on the reward.
Not because I want a reward. What I'm saying is quit wasting our time.
Thank you. And just, Mr. City Attorney, stop me if I'm wrong. You know, we have had rewards, many, that have been successful. In fact, it was not too long ago where we've had individuals come here complaining about the awards not being successful, and it was a vote for us to pay the rewards. So, Mr. Krikorian, did you want to say a word?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I think you hit it on the head. You know, for somebody to come up and suggest that rewards haven't been paid since 1980 is just factually nonsense, and, you know, members of the public need to understand that it's nonsense. In the short time that I've been on the council, I've had brutal murders in my district, and the murderer is now in prison because of a reward. And the only reason that that person would have been brought in was because somebody testified against them because of the reward. And so it's just... This continuing drumbeat is just utter nonsense. We bring these reward motions at the request of the Los Angeles Police Department detectives when they think that it will have merit in solving a case. That's it. Thank you.
No, I agree with you. Mr. Corretts? Okay, maybe Mr. Corretts's button was pushed by accident. If we could vote on this item, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
So that brings us where?
Item 36. Yes, sir. Item 36, called Special for Cards.
Okay, now... Okay, I have Mr. Walsh, but did somebody say he was out of time? Mr. Walsh, no, you have time. So he can come forward. And Mr. Akala? Mr. Akala, your time has been completed. But Mr. Walsh, you do have time. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Simple. This, again, is another reward. This is the murder of Raymond Rice. I don't want vague... Mr. Walsh is a liar. Somebody in my neighborhood got arrested, and he went to jail. And all I am asking, and you refuse to give it to us, is a list of how many rewards are out there and a list of how many have been collected. They refuse to give that, and you call me, 25 years a teacher at L.A. U.S.D., two years in the Peace Corps. You call me a liar. You try to destroy my... All I'm asking from all of you, is there one of you who will give us a list of how many outstanding rewards there are since 1990 and how many have been collected on? No. You call me a liar with no details, you garbage, every single one of you. If you please... If you please control yourself, because when you get excited... Hold his time. Hold his time. Hold his time, Mr. Walsh. I'm asking you not to get excited, because when you get excited, you spit all over the podium up there, and you spit on the microphone, and that's not sanitary for other people that follow you. So I'm just saying, control yourself, because you need to be fair to other people that follow you. So you have 54 seconds left. Speak to the item. Maybe I should cover my mouth. Maybe you should cover your mouth. Maybe I should hold my hand like this. Speak to the item. I'm telling... I was speaking to the item, and you told me I spit on you. What garbage. Speak to the item. I'm telling you right now, Raymond Rice is dead. Snitches get stitches. That's what it says. Of course, maybe we should have Raymond Rice's people come up here, his family, and maybe they would say, Mr. Walsh is right. I'm asking you again, forget about my saliva. I'm asking you a question. Why won't you release the number of outstanding rewards, how much money, and how much has been paid out? And you won't, and all you do is call me a goddamn liar. Go to hell. Let's prepare to vote on the item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to item 37, called Special for Cards.
Okay, item 37, and that was called special for Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh is... Mr. Walsh, does he have time? So his time is gone, and you already indicated to me that Mr. Akala's time has expired. So, members, let's prepare to vote on item 37. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, that would bring us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to item 42. It's matter scheduled for closed session.
Okay, so if, Mr. City Attorney, do we have to make any announcements or anything prior to going into closed session, or can I just tell the sergeants to clear the chambers?
Mr. President, council's going into closed session on item 42, a government code section 54957.6, closed session.
Okay, so sergeants, if I could ask you to begin having individuals leave the council chambers, and then maybe we could give a call over to our custodian crew so that they can come and clean the podium at the...
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10pm until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violent traffic accidents. And we, uh, have done no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the, uh, the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of eighteen, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as the Pearl Beach.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, it's a guardian of someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
That's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they, uh, they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
The average adult spends more than eight hours in front of the screen each day. Children spend up to four hours. Studies show that sedentary lifestyles put you at risk for disease, even at an early age. But a healthy lifestyle is just a click away. Los Angeles Recreation and Parks provides over sixteen thousand acres of parkland with parks and lakes, swimming pools, golf courses, skate parks, and dog parks, and more than one hundred eighty community recreation centers. A healthy lifestyle is just a click away. LAParks.org.
It just takes one cup.
Every year thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves. But together we can change that.
By sponsoring a child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play.
And a safe haven like Hollenback Park.
With one cup, I can play soccer after school.
With one cup, it helped me get here to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to onecup.org and make a difference today.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
585, I can't find 060 watch three.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have to know good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as parole week.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to you by the parents, it's a guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
That's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
It just takes one cup.
Every year thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves, but together we can change that.
By sponsoring a child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play, and a safe haven like Hollenbeck Palace.
With one cup, I can play soccer after school.
With one cup, it helped me get here to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to onecup.org and make a difference today.
Remember, we don't have many general public comment cards. I anticipate we will finish shortly. Mr. Corretts.
So I'd like to ask that item number 25 go forthwith.
We're in open session.
Are we not in open session?
We are beginning to get there.
Get the public in.
You almost had, Deion, almost had a stroke. Okay, now we're good. Mr. Corretts.
I asked that item number 25 go forthwith.
Without objection. Mr. O'Farrell.
For, forthwith as well, please.
Without objection.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now back in open session. Mr. Clerk, what is before this body?
Mr. President, that brings counsel to general public comment for items not on counsel's agenda.
Okay, let's, uh, let's have Mr. Walsh, Mr. Herman, and Mr. Akala.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, Jay Walsh confidential, I have to be careful not to spit on, uh, Mr. Wesson. Uh, I'm, I don't think I'll, I'll miss you. Okay. Number one, we're going up in a few minutes to inspect all the boxes of the files of the Ethics Commission which you have decided to throw out. Actually, you're not the worst when it comes to running the meeting, Chairman Wesson. You're far from the worst. And number one is metal detectors. The reason the cop was shot was there was, I mean, he opened fire on them. Where are the metal detectors for the division? Where were the metal detectors? Now, there are metal detectors downtown at the main headquarters where Beck is, so you can't shoot Beck. But as far as the West Division, and I'm telling you right now, every cop in every division is a sitting duck. There are no metal detectors. There are metal detectors in this building, there are metal detectors at City Hall, there are metal detectors all over the city except there are no metal There are metal detectors all over the city, except there are no metal detectors to protect the cops. Now, if the wimpy police union doesn't care, they're lucky that the cop that was shot and riddled with bullets didn't die. We're asking right now for the police the same level of security that you have up here. We're asking for every single division headquarters to have a metal detector. I guess they didn't think that anybody would come into an LAPD office, a division, and shoot it up. Well, they learned what's different today, or yesterday. We want metal detectors in every single division. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Herman, I called you. Mr. Akala followed by James Johnson. So Juan, come now. Mr. Akala, speak.
All right, um, Weezer, Fuentes, Englander, Cedillo, Buscaino, Bonin, Blumenfield, City Clerk, City Attorney, Voting Clerk, Price, Parks, O'Farrell, Martinez, LaBanche, Krikorian and Corretts and Mr. President. What the hell are you people doing to us? We elected you to help the people. We didn't elect you to rip off the people. Nobody has ever voted for a parking meter. Why do you have the forces of evil out there collecting money from everybody? You use the police as the collection agency. They are supposed to be crime fighters. You know what that guy said when he went shooting in the police department? "I have a complaint." How many complaints are there in the whole city and they never get heard? The people are not going to take it forever. I do not condone any violence. The only thing that I'm asking for is provide housing for everyone without a stupid landlord like the City Hall that will take your house for a lien. You owe us taxes. We pay taxes every damn day. And you notice that I haven't insulted any of you today, right? Not yet, dickheads. Anyway, I will not use that kind of language when I run for mayor because I'll be one of you. But I don't expect to win, and if I win, I expect to be erased. Hello.
Thank you. So I have Mr. Herman followed by Mr. Johnson, followed by Yvonne Michelle Autry.
Kiss. Keep it simple, stupid. K-I-S-S. Because snitches get all the stitches. For without metal detectors for all divisions of our LAPD to be protected, how dare you not provide the safety to our law enforcement? Batman came in here today and he discussed with all of you provisions of safety and health and the welfare of the people for we, the people. And yet, you sat there in your squandering little debris of decrement. And so I had to come in to remind you that propositions prohibit severe physical hardships in a city like Los Angeles now becoming the next Detroit. The state should not be borrowing monies or funds, Mr. Weezer, or taking bribes from USC as you would call it a fair token of appreciation. No. Funds are used for public transportation. Screw redevelopment because it's done and over with. It's dead, thanks to Willie Brown, Charlie Brown. And then yet, local governments must protect our services. Protect our services, programs and activities for we, the people, believe in the Constitution, our First Amendment right under the Bill of Rights. So take it from a public point, and that's this. Kiss. Keep it simple, keep it simple, keep it simple and not so stupid. Let's not get stuck on being stupid. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson followed by Ms. Autry, followed by Mr. Marine.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. James Johnson, SCIU Local 721. First of all, very disappointed that we were not allowed to speak on item 28.
Hold, hold, James time, hold his time. James, you've been here longer than me. When something is, uh, you have a committee and it's discussed there, we don't discuss it here, and you know that. I mean, so in all fairness, if we have already satisfied the public comment, we don't have the discussion again here. You know that. So go right ahead.
When you're spending close to $60 million allowing folks to at least have their say about their opposition would have been the courteous thing to do. But nevertheless, there are a couple of realities with this contract that you voted on. Bottom line is, you basically are telling these operators that it's okay to pay folks $8 an hour. That's what you're basically doing. Thank goodness the bulk of the folks that work for the city doing this work, thank goodness, will have a job to go to. But the bottom line is that I don't want to hear about hypocrisy about living wage ordinances and the like when you take the position that it's okay to pay people that park cars $8 an hour. The other issue is, the CAO's office never met with Local 721 on this issue. Never met with us. We have documentation of the fact that it never happened. There are people that were in the room, discuss it, never happened, no transition plan, nothing. Didn't happen. The other frank issue is, these are lots that make money. If this was an issue that you weren't making money on these lots and we need to figure out a way to produce more, that'd be one thing. But you're basically contracting out work for people that make money for the city, not take it away. So the bottom line is, the CAO never met with us. Matter of fact, the department themselves submitted two proposals to do the work that needs to be done themselves, and it was never allowed to be gone through.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Autry followed by Mr. Marine.
Good afternoon. First, I'd like to, um, I'd like to establish the importance of keeping campaign promises. This is a very broad and general admonition or reminder, if it can serve as a censure admonishment for those of you that do not. You know, you served the constituency most recently. You know, I do a lot of phone banking, and I try to be an integritous person. When I put my integrity, my name on the line in making campaign promises that are not kept, I realize many of you say whatever you have to say to get elected and then do not serve the constituency that have by and large put you in position to do just that and not just serving yourselves, the businessmen or the real estate developers. You know, this is ridiculous. It's becoming more of a norm than, you know, something that is, you know, just not, not a frequent occurrence. Most, most recently, I had to campaign for Sebastian Ridley-Thomas. He made a campaign promise which I held him accountable to in protecting or maintaining viable opportunities to, to, to maintain the presence of, of small businesses. So a small business that I knew of was in danger of losing its lease because the new landowner, who was Isaac Shomoff, had raised his, his rent 100%. The government can't even intervene because of laissez-faire. So how is he going to keep his campaign promise to help maintain viable presence, the presence of small businesses? I just need to reiterate the importance of you not making these broad statements which you have no intention of keeping in favor of the Tom Gilmore's, Isaac Shomoff's, or those that have monopolies. And I'm seeking on a state level to change that legislature so that the government can intervene to regulate market rate when the monopolies do not prohibit horrible, horrible increases in rent like-
Thank you. Mr. Marine? Thank you. Mr. Marine?
Yes, good morning. There you go. George C. Scott said, "You can't flim-flam an honest man." George Mini said, "The only person who doubts the integrity and resourcefulness of a plumber never got billed by a plumber." But, uh, we know I sent you the bill on October 2nd, 2009, and we know we can't blame the CAO and the heads of departments, offices and bureaus he represents for not telling you that sheltering the money of employees and not accounting for the benefit some owed is illegal. Anybody listening? Illegal. That means you knew it was illegal since October 26th, 2010, and you continued to perform these illegal acts knowingly to the present. Every member on this council has sheltered the money of city employees past 1,000 hours. Therefore, you in violation of IRS codes in regard to providing city employees' participation in public employee pension plans. And we know, and we use your, every cent of money of this used for our benefit, and we chose us where I got it. Right now, $19.51 an hour for plumbers is being sent to union trusts. And we know the city has taken 10% of our take-home pay. So it's right there. All you got to do is read the writing instead of writing more reading that you don't understand. Thank you.
Okay, uh, that's the last general public, uh, comment speaker that we have for today. Any announcement, or what's next, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, counsel has motions for posting and referral.
Consider them posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
The desk is cleared. Announcements? Seeing no announcements, if everyone could please rise, if you're in the council chambers, please rise for adjourning motions. I will look to my right, which is the Krikorian side, Price side. Any, okay, I don't see any. I'll look to the, Mr. Fuentes. Okay, now, Mr. Parks.
I'd like to request the counsel adjourned in memory of Ben Abernathy, who was born May 1931, passed away peacefully at his home on February, on March 28th, 2014, at the age of 82. His family moved from Colorado to Fontana, California in 1949. He proudly served his country in the US Navy. He also was civic-minded, joining the Fontana Police Department in 61. He was an outstanding officer and rose through the ranks to chief in 1981. He loved and respected his colleagues and led by example. He made Fontana a safe place. He held the position of chief until 1988, where he retired and was able to enjoy spending his time with his family. His hobby included wood carving and working with stained glass. He treasured his time. He was able to spend with his family and loved spending time with his four-legged, uh, family members. Today, uh, not, on April the 4th, sorry, the Fontana Police Department is escorting the former chief to his final resting place in Montesino Memorial Park, Loma Linda, where he's recognized in full police honors. He's preceded his death by his wife in 2007 and his son Brian in 2013. He's currently survived by a host of family members.
Okay, now let me look to my, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Reverend Monsignor Gerald McSorley, who was a priest here in the Los Angeles region for 50 years, half a century, and who gave himself, of himself selfishly to many people in the area. He was born in April 21, 1941 in County Tyrone, North Ireland. He grew up on his family's farm. He was committed from a young age to the Catholic Church, attending the parish school and Christian Brothers Secondary School in Omagh. In 1958, Monsignor McSorley entered All Hallows College Seminary in Dublin, engaging in studies in philosophy and theology to become a priest. He was ordained into the priesthood June 21st, 1964. Six weeks later, he arrived in Los Angeles to be a priest for the Archbishop of Los Angeles. When asked why he came to Los Angeles, he said he felt God was calling him here. Over his priesthood, Monsignor McSorley presided as priest and pastor over a number of church communities in the Los Angeles area. He did so with joy and love. He was assigned first to Saint Mariana de Paredes in Pico Rivera, where he served until 1970, and later on, he served at various churches throughout the city of Los Angeles. In 1989, Monsignor McSorley celebrated his Silver Jubilee, a recognition of 25 years in the Holy priesthood. In 2010, he was honored by Pope Benedict XIV. The Pope made him chaplain to his holiness and bestowed upon him the title of Monsignor. Monsignor McSorley remained the Saint Bernard Parish's beloved pastor until 2011, when he retired and was made the church's pastor emeritus. In retirement, he moved to Carlsbad, California. He passed on March 28th after a long battle with cancer. He would have celebrated his 50th year jubilee of his Holy priesthood this year. Rosary and vigil service was held Sunday, April 6th. The funeral mass was held yesterday, Monday, April 7th. Monsignor McSorley conceived of the church as a place where all were welcome, no matter what or where you came from. Over the years, he baptized, confirmed and married hundreds of Angelinos, including my right, Rochelle and myself. He marched with the community against injustice. He intended many children's sports games. He visited his people, he visited people at the hospital. He was compassionate and welcoming. From the bottom of my heart, I want to thank Monsignor Jerry McSorley for his service and wish him, uh, well trip up into a place where he can continue his service to all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Any more adjourning motions? Members, this session is adjourned.